For me like laying around much as I did for those two days.
Yeah, that's what I thought I had at first. I thought I just had a bad cold or a sinus infection, but it was like okay, well with a sinus infection, you don't get a hundred and two temperature. You don't hardly get body aches that bad.
I never had a fever.
Didn't you?
Nope.
On Monday afternoon, Monday afternoon, mine hit like a hundred and two.
Never went above eighty.
Majority of the people that I know that have gotten it said that they never got a fever either. A lot of them just like it has a really, really bad cold.
Well, Monday, Tuesday was awful. It was, I couldn't even, I don't even, can't even tell you what I did. Other than I think I laid in my recliner or in bed.
Well, I've coughed and shared a hard time breathing and all I had was like a head cold and only to sneeze.
Walk from the library over to the kitchen, you get a glass of water and you're on breath.
I could touch it every, every Monday.
Are we ready?
First thing, Jill, Jill and I, my partner, the same time.
C D is running, Wayne can just hit the button. C D is running. Oh, we made some for the black right hand.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the special city council this quarter on Monday, November 30th, four o'clock. Uh, roll call.
Kirby Moynihan.
Michelle Adams.
Wayne McQuarwick.
Mike Johnson.
Nicole Winder, Wendy Manson.
Kevin Truplock.
Tom Marslack.
All right, we're gonna start with Kevin.
Do you wanna do the budget first?
No.
No? Okay. All right, uh, COVID stuff, I guess. Where to begin, I guess, is what it all starts out as. Um, so recently, um, as almost all of us are aware, um, the city has, um, had some staff that has tested positive or been exposed and stuff like that. Um, and we just kinda need to solidify some recommendations and figure out what we wanna do, uh, moving forward from this point on. Uh, there is no magic crystal ball that has all the answers. Um, you can find whatever answers you want online. Um, there's some clicking things between the C D C, the Minnesota Department of Health, different cities that you look up, um, what everybody's doing and things like that. Um, so I guess we'll just start with staffing currently. Um, currently staffing at, um, City Hall, um, the doors are locked, so they're kinda back to how things were with the first wave of COVID when we first started. Um, however, there's a little more of a wrench in the system where there may not be anybody in the City Hall at any given time just because of what's gonna happen here, uh, moving forward with everything. Uh, and then Public Works is still on rotating schedule and things.
Yep.
How is that going for the guys?
Nobody's been sick.
Do they, do they have a lot of work to do with only two of them here as opposed to four?
They can handle it if they can. I'll call the other ones in, but nobody's been going just fine.
This is a good time of the year because there's not a whole lot going on unless it snows and it's.
If it snows, then we're gonna lay in the balloon.
So I guess, what, what do we wanna do with staffing moving forward? I guess that's the first item that we have to kinda tackle.
Well, I should be back now.
When does, when does Heidi come back?
Heidi can come back anytime she's.
I mean, she's back on vacation and anything, right? So she's back tomorrow?
Yeah, I hope so, because I thought, yeah. That's my understanding.
Not to pry into personal lives and whatnot, but was she kinda just had like a stay vacation at home?
Yeah, she didn't go anywhere.
Okay.
She canceled her vacation. She just stayed home. And I know she said they weren't doing anything for Thanksgiving other than maybe taking some food over to her parents, so. And I, I've been home since the sixteenth. I, other than I've been in the office, other than nobody there, I had come in and run the chats. Otherwise, I've been home for two weeks, so I've been in contact with that, so nobody knows. So we should be able to be back open now.
Ninety-five percent of the time?
Yeah. I mean, this morning it was a little tough because, and I still get pretty tired, but, um, so I didn't wanna come in real anyone here at seven and not know if I'd make it till four, so I came in about nine thirty. So it wasn't real long until they were closed.
Um, at this point, we can kinda probably just hold everything until the end for, we'll, we'll continue on with discussion. It, it would be my recommendation to continue on with the way things are going, um, at least into the first of the year, if not beyond. Um, again, there's no crystal ball. They're anticipating another surge, um, after the Thanksgiving celebrations and stuff that people didn't heed the warnings to. But that's something that's out of our control completely, unfortunately, so, um, that would be my recommendation, open for discussion or other ideas or thoughts or plans too.
I think, didn't you uncheck some of the other cities, I think Buffalo and, um, was it Dassel or somebody? They're all gonna still be closed into, like through December or something?
Yeah, a, a lot of them that I've talked with, the emergency management group that I talked with a lot, um, which has cities around here, cities in the metro, cities way far out state, um, they're essentially planning on this weird schedule all the way through January just so that they can get new council up to speed with where everything's at, so if there doesn't need to be any snap decisions or anything either without any information. Um, and it's also kind of, January is just kind of a tough month for a lot of people as well. Um, getting back from the holidays and again, we'll probably see another surge after Christmas and New Year's more than likely. At least that's what, uh, everything's gonna be telling us, um, and that's, the, the information that we have is the best that we can go off of. Um, trying to make sense of it sometimes doesn't make sense. Um, you know, there's people who are getting grabbed in tests and they're not getting their results for two days. Yet there's people who are sweating in a cup at home and getting their results in eighteen hours. So I, who knows what's going on, what's gonna fix this, how it's gonna be fixed. Um, they're saying, um, the most recent thing that I read a few days ago, um, in order for huge herd immunity to take effect, seventy percent of the population has to be immunized. Um, with the current, um, layout of possible vaccines and how that's set the play out, that could be, um, May before we get to that level. Um, and that's if there's no hiccups during the immunization process. There's gonna be hiccups. We know that and, yeah, we'll see how that plays out at, but.
We have our immunizations coming in January and February. They took a roll call today. I think who would be doing it or not.
I suppose into nursing homes or assisted living and stuff, that'd be first.
So my guess, my question is, so now that I've had it, am I immune to it for a while? No, not at all? Well, I thought they said for so long used to be worth.
They kinda say like three months. They were kinda telling me.
So that's one of the things where, if you, you can find, you can find whatever answer you want.
Yeah.
Um, the one that I'm going to is based off of somebody that I know that had it, beat it, didn't have any symptoms or anything, um, and he was a confirmed positive test and everything. And then, uh, two weeks later, he got it again. He ended up in the hospital that night. Um, but when this all started, they said, yep, you get it once, you're done. That was with the single strain COVID nineteen. I believe, and don't quote me on this because I'm not a hundred percent sure because I haven't dived this in deep into COVID since the beginning of everything. Um, back when I was diving in deep, which would've been Junish, um, there were eight different strains and I believe now we're probably into the twins. So you're immune from the strain that you've got, but the chance of you getting that exact strain again without mutating or forming something different? Who knows? So, um, basically assume that if you got it once, you can get it again. So all protections need to stay in place, mask wearing, hand washing, cleaning of everything constantly, over and over and over again.
So I'd like to keep my guys on the week rotations. I would hate to see all four of them sick at the same time. We go on a street guy and a water and sewer guy together each, each week, so if we lose one, we can always bring in another.
And, and Public Works is, not saying that City Hall staff isn't important, but Public Works staff is, they can't do their job remotely, except for Wayne, he can kinda do his stuff remotely. But the four guys that are out in the field and stuff, they can't go fix streets from home. It just doesn't work. So that's, and if we go back to March, that was something that I had made very, uh, clear that that's gotta be one of our priorities is worrying about our infrastructure protection and operations and stuff, um, and moving forward with that. So I think that is a great plan to basically keep it going essentially.
Well, and we'll be back, I mean Jess will be out yet this week, but I'm back now and Heidi, so if we keep rotating like we are, we should be okay too, so that at least one of us will be around without being sick hopefully. Um, we'll keep Deb out of there. Keep her home. She can work from home again.
We do have a COVID positive person on the fire department right now who's on quarantine. Um, one person doesn't affect anything for us. I have a magic number in the back of my head that if we get to fifty percent, then we're gonna have some issues. Um, but until we get to that point, I'm not gonna lose much sleep over that. There's gonna be a lot of guys and stuff, and thankfully we have a fire department that's very close to us as well, so. Um, so the, the next item then would be, what do we do with future council meetings and various meetings?
The problem is, is the December fourteenth council meeting is a public hearing.
Truth and taxation.
It's a truth and taxation public hearing. So I don't know how you hold that remotely or by phone. Um, I almost, I think we're all gonna have to meet, uh, have a council up here. Deb won't be able to be here, so I can be like on the end of the table. Maybe we just tell our consultants if they don't have to be here not to come. And then we'll see if we can't put the podium out always, you know, if anybody does wanna speak. Generally, we don't get very many people. Last year we had maybe one, one.
Usually we're.
And I don't know if Rue even spoke last year. I remember this one guy, Mr. Brother Kane, but I talked to him ahead of time and then they left because remember they said they would talk to the county.
Yeah, I mean, if you had tables to the end of the thing here and then if it's just you and Wayne, I mean, I think it's spread out far enough that the camera might be zoomed out more, but.
As long as we can take up some, that's usually the biggest thing, because I, like, if I take notes for yet two minutes, I could make a motion. Um, so if you can't see people's faces, it's not a big thing. It's just more sold out.
And I, I would, I would honestly suggest maybe just setting up even the council into this.
Like we are now.
Point, we could, we have cables now that make this a little bit easier. Um, in the governor's order, govern, government meetings are exempt from restrictions and stuff, so we're fine as far as that goes. Um, and yeah, can't really do that normally at all.
It'd be kinda tough, yeah, so that's why I said if we, you know, we probably won't have very many and generally our December meeting is not that big of a meeting anyway. There's not a whole lot on the agenda normally. Um, you'll have to adopt the budget.
We have chairs up against the wall to keep people back, yeah.
If we have to do it, I don't, we have to talk really about any kind of rate increases or anything, so I don't know that. The other thing we normally do is we have resolutions for second lap, because I, we raise that every year. That's charge of developers or second lap fees. So that we probably have the resolutions, but that's kinda like housekeeping type things, but normally it's a pretty small meeting, I mean, those business-wise.
So that's the December one. Moving to January, we also have something that probably should be an in-person meeting as well, January council meeting for swearing in and beginning of the year type stuff probably. Um, barring any huge developments or changes, I think if we take the time and set this up appropriately, and I can work with the guys too, I came over earlier and just kinda poked my head in, that'll work, might work, so. Um, I'd say probably the two council meetings coming up, December and January, we could just hold in person. And then any other meetings, I don't know, E D A or anybody has any meetings we can maybe put them off or?
The council, the planning and zoning and the park and rep for December have all been canceled.
Okay.
So as far as I know.
So that stuff's already basically taken care of.
So we don't have anything else in December? Other than continuing.
Okay. Um, so then, I'm gonna play worst case scenario a little bit. So we have that phone thing that Tom set up and stuff. Uh, I think that staff should look into getting a Zoom account for future use. The phone thing worked great on, on a cuff and everything like that where we needed it, but Zoom is a little bit more, or some kind of a thing. I shouldn't say Zoom. Um, but we should get some kind of a thing in place and probably keep it forever. Um, I know a Zoom account, we have one for, um, at work, um, our association and I think it's sixteen bucks a month.
I, um, put in a call or an email I sent out to Coleman's asking about iPads or some kind of tablets that Coleman's carry because like all our computer dels, I don't know what they carry for the tablets. And I got an, uh, email back, um, from one of the other guys, from one of the guys that comes out, Steve, saying I should call him, but that's when I was home sick. I think he's scheduled to be in the office this Friday. I was gonna call him, see if they're still planning on coming in to do with our Monday I T's because it'll just be me there by myself. And then I said, if they are, I'll talk to him about the tablets, because that might help, you know, if they can set them up for us. We budgeted already in twenty twenty to get tablets, so depending on how much they are and stuff, we could get them, get them set up and everybody would have them to do the Zoom meetings or whatever they suggest. I don't know what Coleman's, with how they do on some of the other cities, because they do Buffalo, Maple Lake, I think Anandale. So there's quite a few cities they take care of, so I can ask them if they're doing it in some of those other cities.
Who here doesn't have the capability of doing Zoom right now? Lloyd, can you do Zoom?
I can.
Can you do Zoom?
No.
No? Michelle, you can, right?
I'm trying to figure it out. I don't have it right now. I'm not sure I have a computer.
Yes.
I do click into it. I just don't have the camera on it.
See, that's the problem with our camp, our, I mean, our tablets, or I should say our desktops at work, we don't have cameras on them. So I can watch stuff, but they can't see me, but if you give the, this tablet, they probably have a camera on it. I think our laptops, I think like our newer laptops.
They probably do, yeah.
But if we get the, if we get the tablets, then everybody would have them. So it'd be something we could do.
I know you can do that.
You can teach all the rest of us then.
It, it, it's really simple.
Yeah, like it's, it works case, you just download it on your phone and.
Yeah. And basically a, a link to the meeting gets sent out to your email. You click on the link, it opens up Zoom if you haven't downloaded it. If not, it'll open up the web app for it and you say join, join with internet audio and.
It's just like the free conference call thing, only you have video.
Yep. Well, you're thinking for January anyway, aren't you?
Yeah, right.
Be January beyond, so.
We don't have to worry about that.
No, I, I know.
So, yeah.
Basically just something to keep in the back of your heads.
What's going on with that gentleman that was here? I can't remember the name, who it's gonna work with.
Yeah.
Getting us the technology to have.
We can't do it until we get the new stuff in here.
When is that?
Uh, last I heard, end of December, and I can tell you from a little bit that I learned from, um, what meeting they had with him, um, that Deb kinda filled me in. We are not having that set up for that capability whatsoever. In order to do that, um, you would have to get some robust, um, uh, security system in here. Um, and there's not gonna be a computer hooked here all the time. It's gonna be plug and play with the computers essentially. So in order to do that, you would need to put a, and this isn't connected to the fire wall, it's just, so, I'm pretty good with computers. I'm not excellent, um, but I can get into this without a password. Most people with any technical, should be able to get into a simple router, um, and play around with it if they have a little bit of time. So then they can play around with anything that, that system is attached to. Um, if you wanted to do a system like that, it would've driven that cost way beyond what, because we would've had to lay fire down and.
The problem is, is this is a public building, right? If we were in our own chambers where we know it's secure, we wouldn't have to worry about it, but.
A lot of the cities that have that capabilities, they have it in their chambers, which are generally in City Hall. It's already a secure network. It's not a V P N type network that we're dealing with here, which is just open to the public essentially, so.
So do we need like a motion? Is that what you wanna do? But through December into January or what are we gonna do? Or are we gonna serve December or are we gonna?
I would say, um, I don't know if we need a motion or not. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one.
Sure, just do it as it be safe? Sure.
I would say just like do a motion, um, adopting the recommendations of emergency management in regards to staffing and future COVID stuff, and we'll talk about it at all of upcoming council meetings and kinda just, if things change, we'll change it. If they don't change, we'll keep it going the way that it is, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of our emergency management director to continue to keep city staff on rotation through, uh, at least at this point in time, what, the end of January, you know, when we revisit it.
I'll say no.
All right, uh, Kirby.
Yes.
Tom.
Hi.
Nicole. Yes, Lloyd.
Hi.
I will, I.
And again, as things change, I'll be sure to keep staff and council updated the best that I can, but they're changing on a daily basis usually. Um, if there's any huge development, we'll talk, but, um, again, there's no crystal ball out there for this. We don't know, nobody was ever planning on a pandemic like this happening. Um, we're just very fortunate that it happened in this day and age of technology and the ability to work remotely and kind of adjust things and stuff, so, um, again, and I reiterated this in my last few emails, thank you to city staff and everybody in council for being flexible with the scheduling and the understanding of weird stuff happening just kind of out of women, things like that, so. I know most people would rather be doing other things than dealing with COVID, whether it be personally or in a family or in a workplace setting, so. Um, just keep it up and stay healthy, stay happy the best I can. Holidays are a very difficult time for everybody, so. That's where I'll leave it at, unless there's any questions or further stuff to talk about with it.
I have a couple of questions. Um, clearly you know that, um, we've spent a lot of discussion on this relaying. We obviously cannot have the actual ceremony, but can we get lights on the tree? Sadly, you have it on then, that we are giving lights on the tree.
Well, that's what the email said. The email said the lights will be put up.
The Christmas lights, but we haven't decided that for the tree.
Yeah.
We decided after the ceremony, but all your email said was we will put up the Christmas lights.
Then you have that supply check, you have to sound like, uh-oh.
But we had already discussed that for the tree.
Right, so.
I mean, we can throw some lights up on the tree, I mean, that's okay.
That's, that's all the people want. They don't, nobody cares about having a big ceremony and a bell goes out there and clicks the switch. They just want lights on the tree when they drive by.
Yep, yep. Thank you. And then, um, I know that this is a big thing too, um, this was, I think, brought up within the last couple of days, the ice rink. Um, I know it's a lot of work. I know, and like most people said, we don't have more than ten people at that rink on any given time really. All the surrounding towns that have the up and down rings are putting them up. And I don't know the situations in the other towns, you know, I'm just looking at ours, so.
How do you, how do you keep the guys apart and get up the ice rink?
I don't know, but again, like I said.
And that's my question, I guess.
Yeah, we've got one street guy and one sewer guy.
Right, I mean, that's.
Sewer guy's gonna be busy most of the day and the street guy's just gonna run around, do everything else at the counter.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, like I said, Buffalo, Delano, they all got the rigs up just because they know it's, it's not a lot, but it's, it's something for the people, you know, to still get them out and still get them doing something.
We should've put it in North Ridge last year. We wouldn't have to worry about it.
We should've put it up in October, but we still don't have lights out there, so we can't, no can we? So.
The light and the wiring's there, I don't know.
Right, but we still don't have lights.
I've been hoping to see if they put the poles on there.
Right, is, is it still leveled out and so that's just?
Well, I can put a hole when we start to rotate the staff again.
I don't think for us up there, so I'm doubtful.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's just, you know, people are, that was just recently, what, a day or two ago, I think, on the communication. Why can't we at least have the rink? You know, there's not many out there, so. And where do we have?
The thing to remember about the rink is it's, it's more than just putting the rink up.
Oh, it's a lot of work, for sure.
The fire department's not gonna be plugging it this year, um, so it's gonna be all on city staff. But, um, what brought all this stuff up, um, and some of it got really taken out of context on Facebook. I hate social media. I'll just throw that out there. Um, it, it was said, Christmas lights aren't going up, blah, 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 you know, boom, 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 boom. You go and you watch the video and everyone said the Christmas lights cannot go up. I said, Christmas lights may not go up, and that was on the, um, thought or unknowing how the schedule's gonna work with, um, Public Works. Um, and if there's snow, they're not gonna have time to take a break probably. Um, even if they haul in people to help do the streets, afterwards, there's way more cleanup that needs to be done and you're probably gonna be dealing with like two people doing a lot of the cleanup. Yeah, the streets will be cleared off, but now you got sidewalks you have to worry about. You have, um, other snow removal stuff that needs to be taken care of, so. That's really where that statement came from in that meeting. Um, it wasn't saying, no, this isn't happening. Period. The tree lighting thing? Yep, I said that. Um, the ice rinks? Yep, I said that as well, because I cannot think of a way to get that set up with two guys. And the last thing we want as a city, um, is for an exposure or a, um, confirmed case to be tracked back to setting up an ice rink. When the thing we have to worry about is the infrastructure. Um, yes, I feel bad for people, you know, yes, it gives them something to do and everything like that. However, as emergency manager for the city, um, people's personal things aren't really a concern to me. It's hard for me to say that because I, everybody knows what I do for a living. Um, and just saying that makes me feel weird. Uh, but the staff needs to be paramount. The health and safety of our operations needs to be paramount. And, you know, if, if we saw, if we had that magic crystal ball, we thought this was gonna get worse and we had that reprieved during the summertime, we probably could've been way more prepared and had everything taken care of. Unfortunately, that crystal ball doesn't exist, um, and it still doesn't exist and it probably never will exist. Um, but as far as getting projects done and stuff, that's kind of a Duane and what he thinks his guys can accomplish while maintaining safety and healthiness.
And once a rink is up, how do you maintain the requirements for no more than three family or ten people in an ice skating rink? I mean, you know, Delano and Buffalo have resources. They can put somebody out there during hours of operation, but we don't have that ability.
No, they're just open. The redrives are just open. There's nobody maintaining them. The count of people or anything like that.
I guess my biggest question for you is how do you have? I guess my biggest question for you is how do you have, how do you keep two, how do you keep them apart from each other and put up a skating rink? Because they got to stand right on top of each other to put it up. I mean, they have to stand there to connect while one is putting the screws in.
One is on the outside, the other is next to it.
Yeah, and so you can't really keep them apart. I mean, we've been, all summer, we've been keeping them separate. We've got one guy in a truck that's almost ready to fall apart, just so he's not in a truck with anybody else. And now you're going to put them right next to each other to put up a rink. I mean, I, I know where they're coming from, I know kids like to skate, but.
In my view, we, we do this, everything, and then we see the second, third, fourth, whatever number you want to call it surge, and we're going to have to make changes to our operations like we did in April and close parks and amenities that we do have set up.
We never closed the parks?
We made a statement that the city of Montrose is basically saying, don't use the parks. We never broke them off or anything.
They really did invite people in, they were just posted everything.
I was quite surprised to see Wright County post, that the parks and the trails broken, come on down, you know? That kind of surprised me.
There's many, many, many towns that are doing, they're still moving ahead with all of their December activities. Like I, I sent Kevin the one out of the chamber, and I know it's not city, but the Buffalo Chamber, they're doing a thing this weekend, actually. Santa, Rainier, Caroling, all of it, there's, there's tons, there are, and.
All the cities up in the, everything's canceled. No plane, Santa Claus deal, he's going to drive around on a temporary fire truck. People are going to let him go by, that's all.
The city of Brandon, they're not far, they're not close to here, but Buffalo is doing theirs, Delano's got something going on. There's another one. Everybody's just kind of changing it up a little bit. There's a town, what's that one? That's actually doing photos with Santa, two of them, actually. So it's hard to explain.
A lot of that's not sponsored by the city.
Well, I, right, like.
Different communities do.
Sure, and I get that, but my question, I mean, how are they doing it? With, because everybody has the same restrictions, whether it's a city, a chamber, a park, a rec, it doesn't matter, we all have the same restrictions. So how, how is it being done?
Some people aren't following the rules, they're just doing it.
No, they're just changing it, they're just.
Yeah, they're changing it on their own, so.
The rules are still, you know, people are still socially distancing and, I don't know, what he took, did you just say that on the fire truck for Santa?
In the city of Buffalo, she has a big celebration, they called everything out, so Santa's just going to get trussed up and right on over the fire truck.
See, that was. I've been in contact with Santa, and that is an option for us too, to do that, not as a city, as an individual. The city, the city's not going to do anything with it, we already know that, the city's not going to do it. But if the Santa can sit in a truck, in the back of the truck, the same way the fire department does the birthday stuff, why can't Santa sit in the back of somebody's truck?
I can't, we can't control what individuals do, we can't control what other organizations do. All we can control is what the city and its organizations do. A lot of these other cities, they might have more robust chamber of commerce, more robust Lions groups, more robust other organizations that might be out there. And then you get to some of the smaller cities where they may not even really have emergency management thing. They just go through the county, which, in which case we wouldn't even be having these discussions here. But the, the biggest thing is the liability issues. If a contact trace gets taken back to a city event, you could potentially be opening yourself up for liability. That's one of my jobs as emergency management director is to worry about liability for the city and its staff in situations like this. And I, I just, how some of these other cities are doing it, I don't know. I know a lot of them, like Buffalo, it's the chamber, we don't have a chamber that could put together a event. Riding around in a fire truck with Santa and stuff, that scares me because if I miss one street in our service area, I'm going to catch hell for it. And I'm not going to go drive around every street where it's with birthdays and stuff. Everybody knows they need to contact us, and I make half. And that's on an individual basis. I've never once said no to, to it, and we've never missed one that I've had scheduled.
So, so if Santa is still willing to come here and go into a truck, that's not a city truck or anything like that, what's your thoughts on that one?
It would be my recommendation that the city does not endorse it or publicize it on any of its media outlets. But again, we can't control what individuals do, that's up to them. And they have the potential of having to deal with the repercussions of it if there are.
So you'll get lights on the tree, okay? Thank you.
There is, there's time, I don't know. Might not be the prettiest tree you've ever sold, but at least it's.
So it could be like a Charlie Brown tree?
Could be.
That's okay, he said something.
I did see that Public Works got all the lighting up, and I think that took them almost all last week to do, so that's something at least.
To a start with, we had two things.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if they put the lights in the tree, especially since there's already multiple people that said, well, if the city's not doing it, then we're just going to go congregate and go do it ourselves. And I'd rather one guy do it instead of 10, 15 people show up and just completely ignore what we're saying. Oh, just ready for the vaccine to come out and all this stuff to be done with it.
Thank you, baby.
I hope. I'll wait until they word call the King's House.
Exactly. I'll be the first one in line.
Really?
Have to be as sick?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go through it, I went through the last two weeks, you'll be the first one in line. Are you ready? Yep. Okay. So pages two through nine is the revenue budget worksheets. 10 through 30 is expenditure budget. I'm not going to go over all of them, I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. Our revenue, if you look at the bottom line, our revenue exceeds our expenditure, so we're good. That means a lot of our bonds are starting to, our bonds are starting to drop off. So some of our payments, like our sewer, we used to have to have, we had, we used to have a big bond payment in there that's, that's finally starting to build that fund up now. Page 31 is a budget comparison, it's, I've got this year versus last year, I don't know if I have it all. Anybody have any questions on revenue or expenses? Is there anything that stood out that?
At Park and Rock last month, they asked about, so I just want a great clarification. We have an $8,000, I think, budget, something like that, right? And so we only use, what, three grand? How does that carry over? Because Jess had mentioned that since we don't use it, we still have it?
It just stays in the park fund. It doesn't stay in that line item, it just stays in the park fund.
So we actually have more, they actually have more than eight grand in there?
It's in the park fund, so, because it's, so the line items are basically like a year by year type thing, but the fund itself, the money stays in that fund. So there's money in the park fund.
And they're not, so this year, we didn't do even open gym or anything, did we? So we saved that too?
They did some, I think. I think I paid some open gym.
Is that last year still? Because I thought they were always behind. Because I don't remember.
I want to say it paid it in the spring, so I think it was like part of 2019 and part of 2020.
Okay, because we didn't, I mean, for, so 2020, 2021, we didn't, not.
We haven't got anything on that yet, no. And I don't know if they opened it back up this fall.
I don't think so, because we usually get an email from Sheila.
Yeah, and I haven't seen anything. They know they did it in the spring until the schools kind of closed down, so.
Yeah, they usually go until like March, something like that.
Yeah, so I, I did get one bill for that, but.
And then on the EDA, you guys moved that money at the last one, the travel expenses? Are you keeping that there, even with the Aldi situation?
I didn't know any different, I wasn't told any different to take it.
Well, just because, I mean, just because Aldi said no, that doesn't mean we're, wouldn't stop any further.
Right.
We may have, we don't use it, it's there, I mean, it's not like.
That's a separate checking account, actually. EDA has its own checking account.
Correct.
Not going to the malls or anything.
Yeah, so and you can budget up a certain percentage of your actual annual budget can be for EDA, and we haven't exceeded that.
Right, okay.
So we just left it all there. It doesn't get spent, it stays in that account.
Is there a budget line anywhere for like, I know everybody uses this word beautifying highway twelve, you know, because we have all that landscape and stuff that Johnny took care of this year, and all that like wood chips and stuff is pretty dicky.
That's not going to get changed if they do that.
That's 2022, right?
Well, I mean, they did, is it 2022 or 20?
I think they listed it on the 22.
I thought it was 23 now.
23, yeah.
They moved it, but.
I know they bumped it out.
We always have wood chips.
Oh, we do every year? Because it looks.
Well, they get, they get paid and stuff.
They get paid, you know, we have a pile down the road that gets traded too.
Right, okay.
All kind of lines in.
All right, that's all I know, okay.
Anybody else have anything they came across that? So then on page 31, I did a budget comparison from last year, from 2020, the year we're in right now, to 2021. And we're actually about 100,000 less, not quite, 50,000 less than last year probably. And some of that's because of bond payments. Otherwise, every, a lot of it stays the same. Capital projects, last year, we did 355,000 in capital projects, this year, we're only doing 65, which is for truck. And there's money going in there, but we don't have anything scheduled, it'll just stay there for 2022, and we need to do another street project, so. And then on page 32, I did a, so the levy that you consider, this is still the same as it was for the preliminary levy. Nothing changed, so it's still a 6% increase compared to last year, so it's 78,610 more than last year. I actually went out this, and looked at some of, a couple of properties, I just picked two, two different ones. One I picked was only 154,800 from last year, and this year, they, their property value went up to 155,100. But because of the decrease, because of the tax capacity being such an increase, their taxes are actually going to go down 40 dollars. And then I took a high one that I knew in town, and their value actually went down about 10,000, or not quite 10,000 this year compared to last year. And so their taxes are going to go down 146 dollars. So we have a different assessor, we now use the county instead of, we always had Duane Swenson, who worked for the county for many years, and then he went out on his own. But he retired, and so we went back to the county, and I don't know if he lowered some of them, or, you know, it's, it just depends on the person, they all do it differently. And so some of these properties went down, so I think by now, you should have got your tax statement for the value of your property, so you can see if it goes up very much or goes down much, and how it's going to affect your tax, your taxes for next year. But based on our levy itself, you shouldn't have a whole lot of difference in the city taxes itself. And actually, I think on my statement, it showed the county didn't go up as much as they did last year either, so they actually were better. And then page 33 is just the same, it's the proposed levy. We haven't gotten the final one from the, from the city or from the county yet to do, I should have it by the December meeting, but this is just the proposed one still, that showed the same as it did before. So I don't know, if anybody has any questions?
Nothing's changed since September then, right?
No. I think we do different, so in September, we do the preliminary levy, which is all the general funds, general fund, park and rec, that kind of stuff. And then now the full budget includes all the enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, everything. So that's why on page 31, where it's got a comparison, that's the entire budget, the 4,341,678 is our full budget. With everything for all of our funds. So that's what we'll present at the December meeting, if you guys are, you're okay with it, for the truth and taxation hearing. And between now and then, if you come across anything or have any questions, I did this when I was sick, so there might be a couple of line items that I'm not sure about, we'll get through the year. No, I know that's not, it's not up by that much, but there was a couple of like hot later on that I think, oh, I pay over budgeted that one, but it's better to be over budgeted than under budgeted, the money just stays there anyway, so.
Okay, downtown, you know, none of that, it's on the 21, there won't be anything paid on 21?
Well, we'll get, we'll get bond, we'll be bonded for it. So we'll get the money from the bond to pay the contractor, and then we won't start any bond payments until 22.
That's a non-budget?
And anything else, unless any of you guys have any questions?
All right, the 2021 project is, just a question that I had, there was some people that were wondering about it, and then I wanted to know how the, how the letters went out, and we kind of discussed that before you guys came in. The engineer sent out all the letters, and then there was like six or so letters that came back, packets that came back that people didn't receive. So then my question was, is how are them people informed as to what's going on within that project? But that's kind of the engineer, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I can, I can send Jared an email tomorrow or Wednesday and ask him if there's, we need to resend them. Of course, I think that was for the open house, so maybe there's something he can, we can get different addresses or something for them when they send out the information to everybody.
Yeah, because some of them, like I think you had commented too, it's, you know, the villain overlay, and, you know, like people down by Garner got the letters, where people up, you know, closer to Emerson, some got, so it's like a hidden miss. So it's like, how do they determine?
How could that happen? Why don't, why didn't everybody get it?
That's my question.
Some, some people are.
No, they don't do the assessment.
Yeah, some people are responsible assessmentless.
Right, so, and so like I said, the letters that did go out, that got returned, how are them people going to be informed as to what was going on?
As far as I know, they go and put a notice on their door as well about it, because they did that for everyone when they did the Crystal Court and Wayne and whatever. They, they went and put notices on everyone's door or talked to the people who were outside. I watched them do that when they were, before that happened.
Did that get done over there?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of questions about some of that stuff, but Wayne was, that was brought up to Wayne, so. But yeah, everything else was done as far as I know.
I think they went out just as current residents and in the street address, so the only reason they would come back would be is if they have P O boxes.
I was saying, how else do you get it to them, you know, and they would.
Right, yep.
So it was wait until they call and complain, go, what's going on?
Yeah, because then they can, they can send.
Yeah, but if they have a P O box, they still get a water pump, right?
Yeah, but we didn't send them out, the engineers sent them out, so I think they just went by street address.
Yeah, the engineers are responsible for all that, but.
Because I know we had trouble over the years with making, not informing people that they're going to do the streets.
Well, I know they sent out letters because I've seen them, I've seen someone that come back, I know they sent them home.
They went out, yeah, because Heidi prepared them all, but like, just some came back and I just wonder how we still keep in contact, so.
No, I have a, all two of, a couple of people, it seems that we're going to do First Avenue North first, I overlay and over that stuff. Right?
What do you mean, first?
Who did the first, huh? Who, first, first Avenue North? Well, they were to do so, but they didn't decide. Well, they were gonna do some, but they didn't decide what they were gonna do first.
Yeah, that'll be up to you.
No. All the way through, though.
That'll be up to you.
I mean, the first part here where we were gonna put sidewalk in and, and curb and gutter, is that gonna go in to there on First Avenue there?
All the way from Carter on two.
Okay, is it gonna widen that road?
I, I'm not sure, I don't think they can on this end.
That was, that was one of the discussions we had at the last meeting last month, that they, that they talked about how you'd have to purchase land from the railroad to be able to widen certain points.
And widen it should, because they're gonna kinda leave part of it, because nobody on the one side and...
Yeah.
And then how about when you go around the corner, pass a hall on the calendar and the ballpark, are you gonna widen that street or, I think that was the...
I don't think they're gonna widen it.
That's, that's how they white, that's, once it gets to, that's when the animal starts getting white.
I thought that one was gonna get narrowed down, down there on that corner, because he said that was at that point, it was like forty-two or something like that, and other points are like twenty-eight, and that was forty-two and...
Because they're all over the place.
So they're gonna narrow from...
Not First Street, no.
They said they were gonna make it all the uniform of thirty-eight except those.
He was talking about center up here. First Street, once you go past, once you go past Emerson Avenue, First Street is all brand new, so that's all regular, that's the standard.
Right, and like, we can't narrow that before.
No, that's all standard with the road, because that was all put in brand new.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's already got curb and gutter and everything on it.
Yeah. That's why I'm surprised that the people down on First Street or that are closer to Garner got letters, because it's usually the letters go to the assistant ones. But they only have...
I don't know how they, how they do.
Are you talking about like the Millen overlay stuff? They wouldn't get a letter for that. Because there's, that, that's just general maintenance, there's no, at the top.
Did you get that on First Street?
No, I'm not gonna be, I was just, I was just gonna say that when they did our street, like, there's no overlay stuff, that there was, like, there's stuck in the door and all that stuff explaining what was gonna happen, the timeline. But when the letters go, like, the public hearings and stuff that we get back using when they're being assessed something, that's not surprising, some of them houses got those letters, but...
And my question was just if they were gonna put the curb and gutter in, or there isn't curb and gutter.
Yes.
Well, I know Lloyd, too, from talking with the engineers, they can't do all of this in one year, basically, because of the fire station, essentially, because I can't be stuck for three, four months.
Well, they also said that if you give it the two years to do it, we'll get a better bid.
We'll get that, better bid for instance.
Because they, they can, you know, they're gonna over a two-year period rather than being on a time crunch.
More flexibility in our schedule.
Yep. Anything else? We have a motion to adjourn.
They moved.
All right, um, wait one second. So, I think, I'll, anybody wanna say? No? All right, we're done.